Good evening and welcome to our Committee of the Whole Meeting for August 3, 2020. We have two items on the agenda for tonight. First is Washington Street Reconstruction and then Bills and Payroll. So, starting off with Washington Street Reconstruction, I'll turn it over to Dave Wiki, our City Engineer.
Okay, thank you Mayor. I'm gonna set up my screen share here. And let me know if you can see that okay?
Just fine.
Okay. Alright, I think Chase was gonna do a brief introduction and then I was just gonna take it from there. So, if you're ready Chase, we can jump into it.
Sure. I just wanted to give Council a little bit of background on where we came from and then moving forward. If you recall, in January of 2020, the engineering staff brought forward a concept for the Washington Street Corridor. The feedback we received was mainly the portion in between 6th and 8th that we're proposing to do the reconstruction part and parent drop-off and kinda the vehicular movement in that area. Keep in mind, part of that concept included the conversion of Washington Street from a one-way street to a two-way street from 6th, the entire length of the corridor to 18th. So, I just wanted to give you a little brief background before David starts his presentation on that, so.
Okay, advancing forward. So, as Chase was alluding to, just kind of a brief background on how the street is currently configured today. As you look at this slide, it's split into two with the top half of the slide being its own photo. From the bottom half, the top half just showing the corridor from 6th to 12th. And the bottom showing from 12th to 18th, street thrust away. This is a typical urban street section. It has a 70-foot right-of-way with 35-foot back-to-back curb pavement. That's currently an asphalt overlay over top of an existing old concrete pavement. Going back a little bit, it's one-way from 6th Street to 18th Street currently with the conversion being from one-way to two-way from 1st to 6th that occurred sometime in the late 2000s. The one-way traffic on this section from 6th to 18th, it's got stop-controlled intersections at 12th Street, 18th Street, 6th Street and with a traffic signal at the 7th Street intersection. And that, so that traffic signal comes with a pedestrian push-button actuated signal head. To note, parking is currently allowed on the west side of the street throughout that corridor. And it's a 25 mile an hour speed limit. Okay, moving on. So, as a lot of you will recall, back in January 2020, when we give our Committee of the Whole Updates on Washington Street, this was the design concept that we presented at that time. And what it shows is what we had, what we had laid out. It shows some diagonal parking down there by the school because that was something that we had considered. It was a request at the time from the school. We could accommodate some additional parking through there. We added some curb ball bouts to shorten the pedestrian crossing distance to provide pedestrian safety. And the intersection at 7th to be converted into a four-way stop vehicular movement with those flashing red beakers over top of the stop sign. And then, this was all predicated on the two-way conversion. And so therefore, we would have no parking along Washington Street as it currently is to this day. So, you know, the main feedback at that January Committee of the Whole Meeting was that Council wanted us to do a little bit more digging and a little bit more consideration and try to improve the design a little bit and work more with the school and the church to try to make this maybe a little bit better design. The biggest feedback that we received from that meeting was some of the pedestrian safety concerns along with the parent drop-off. Where parents would drop off their students, drop off their kids for the school along Washington. Alright, next slide. So, since that time, you know, we've worked, done a lot of collaboration between the school and the church. We've had several meetings with them and lots of communication back and forth. And we've collaborated with them very closely to come up with the kind of the best-fit design that, you know, I think makes everybody happy, the stakeholders that are involved in this project. So, what we ended up doing is, again, this is predicated on a two-way conversion, but we added, what we did first off is that we switched the bus drop-off in front of the school from Washington Street onto 7th Street. Were able to take that existing greenbelt parkway and to convert that into a bus drop-off. That way, the bus could get off of Washington and be able to utilize 7th to drop off students that ride the bus. And then in addition to that on Washington, we're able to provide for this slip lane where parents could get into that slip lane and continue to drop off their kids and their students off in that slip lane off to the school in a manner that they're currently able to do. But it also is able to keep traffic moving in both directions on Washington Street. That little divider there between the street and the slip lane, that would just be painted. We had thought about making that maybe like a mini raised boulevard, but that probably presented us some maintenance issues. So, that would just be painted. In addition to that, a little bit of redesign of the intersection itself, again with curb ball bouts and improved striping for the pedestrian crossings. And then we went to also a different type of four-way stop sign system. So, this stop sign system, instead of the flashing beakers above the sign, these stop signs are the LED wrap-arounds that flash. So, if I advance forward here to the next screen, this kinda gives you the idea of what that stop sign would be. So, you can see it's a LED flashing stop sign. These things can be timed, so we can time them to accommodate virtually any time that would suit the school's needs. In addition to that, we could also set them and time them for mass to be utilized that way as well. The other thing about this stop sign is it's solar-powered, so there wouldn't be any additional infrastructure that would be needed to install these things. So, there's definitely a benefit there as well. Oh, I'm gonna back up just one more time, something I forgot. So, that slip lane that we talked about or that I talked about previously. So, when it's not being used during the school and during parent drop-off, it does allow for an additional approximately 11 stalls for parking on Washington. And then also, when the bus drop-off is not being utilized on 7th, that would provide an additional seven stalls of parking as well. So, I know one of the concerns was the loss of parking with the conversion. So, this is a way that we were able to kinda compromise and add additional parking as well. Okay, so for our proposed two-way, as we previously discussed, we're proposing the conversion from one-way to two-way from 6th Street all the way down to 18th Street in the entire corridor. The conversion of the 7th Street intersection to a four-way all-way stop with those flashing LED beacons. And then, the current stop intersections at 6th, 12th and 18th would remain as-is. So, some of the conversation and concerns that were brought up at the committee meeting back in January was some more information on the conversion itself to two-way. So, what we did in our division is that we went and did a lot of research on what other communities have done, other cited case studies where communities did actually, you know, kinda study the effects of what would happen when they converted from one-way to two-way. So, we were able to get some good feedback and received a lot of good information discussing the pros that in our mind kinda outweighs the cons for this conversion. And a lot of them were, you know, obviously, there's an inherent traffic calming that goes in with the two-way traffic. It naturally slows down vehicular movements. The stops, the all-way stop sign and the ball bouts at the intersection, you know, from both directions, traffic is, or from all directions, traffic is forced to make that stop at that intersection. So, there's no potential of running, you know, green lights or, you know, trying to make the yellow light when it turns red. So, you know, we're forcing vehicular traffic to stop to allow for those crossings. And then, some of the other things that were discussed was, or let me back up, some of the other things that we had done when we were going back and re-looking at this whole corridor is, you know, we had the traffic counts previously. We did pedestrian counts at that intersection back in February. That shows all the pedestrian movements through that intersection. And also, we pulled records from the Public Safety Office on the traffic stops and traffic violations within that corridor. And I'll just note, you know, within the last two years, there's been over 300 traffic stops in that corridor as it stands now. A lot of them relate to increased speed and there is some as well that related to, you know, going the wrong way on a one-way. Anecdotally, we've talked to residents and it's been observed that there's probably, at least on a weekly basis, people driving the wrong direction on that street. And coincidentally, when we were doing the pedestrian counts, it was just a two-day count that we did. We observed three wrong-way direction travelers on that street. Okay, so obviously, the pros and the cons, you know, it's safer. One-way streets, they do correlate with a decreased level of driver retention. The one-way streets, you know, they do allow for higher rates of speed for that corridor. Pedestrians that cross the two-way streets, you know, drivers do tend to slow down more for perceived vehicular conflicts. And again, the all-way stop, you know, we're ensuring that those drivers do indeed stop at that intersection. The network does allow drivers to take the most direct routes from origin to destination. When State Street was converted to two-way from a one-way, that was a one-way going into town. And so, you know, the one-way going out of town obviously was Washington Street. So, with that State Street no longer being a one-way and being converted to two-way, you know, it makes that Washington one-way obsolete because it's not, it's not the route that's dedicated to get out of the downtown area. I would say that, you know, there's other benefits to converting to a two-way. Maintenance, snow plowing, sanitation pickup and just people coming in and out of the residents that live along that corridor. You know, they have the option now, would have the option to be able to go either direction. The one con that we had mentioned previously was that church parking would be eliminated because of the constraints. That was one of the topics that was brought up that was a concern. But as I mentioned previously, you know, I think we kind of addressed that and kinda come to a compromise with the church and school with adding that additional parking on 7th and also on Washington as well. So, with that, I'm not sure if, we did receive a letter of support from the church and the school. So, they're in full support of what we have, what we've put together here and what is being presented tonight. And before I make a recommendation to the Council, I was wondering if Ms. Hackett happened to be on the line. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if she is or not. If she is, if she'd be willing to say a few words.
Yes, she is. And Ms. Hackett, if you would like to join in, you're welcome to. I've promoted you to panelist.
Okay. Well, I just wanna say thank you because I know this was kind of a long process. We put you through some paces trying to figure out the best plan and everything. I feel like you worked very well with us. You were open to our ideas and you listened to us. So, thank you very much. I feel like it's a total win-win for us. It'll be nice for us to have a spot that's actually designated for parents to drop off. That lane will be much appreciated both on 7th Street and on Washington Street. The adding those spots also gave us some of the parking that we were worried about for church on the weekends. So, I guess I just wanna say thank you and we do think this is gonna be a nice proposal and are excited about it.
Okay, excellent. So, being as a decision is being asked for tonight, unless Council objects, I will open it for public comment in a few minutes. We have about a half an hour before our next meeting. For Council, are there any questions that you'd have before we open up to the public and then come back to you for?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to ask Ms. Hackett a question. Have you had opportunity to talk with other elementary principals in Cedar Falls? Seems to me that dropping kids off and picking kids up does get pretty hectic. And do you think your situation's any different than the other elementary schools? And have they found better solutions?
I think we all have the same problem. There's just a lot of people coming at the same time. I have talked with others and I've talked to, talked with the Public Safety Department last year just to see if they had any ideas for us because it is troublesome. And they really, they just said it's just kind of the same at every school. We have people out there watching the kids. I do really, I'm really excited about having a designated lane because before they were just being dropped off on 7th Street. And there wasn't a designated lanes. So, it was just kind of, they held up traffic and people tried to go around each other. So, I'm hoping this will help our situation. But I think it's kind of the same at every school when you've got, you know, got a bunch of people dropping off at the same time and you can't really control, you know, everybody has to be worked by eight. So, you know, by 7:55, 8 o'clock, people are just swarming. So.
Do you use, do you use sixth graders or junior high kids or people to help move kids around? Or do you have adults doing that? Or how do you handle that?
Both. In the morning, we have some adults out there. After school, we have traffic, we have our eighth graders, our traffic controllers, and they help a little bit.
Well, I ask these, I'm not gonna take any more time there, but I ask these because this is an issue I think we have in every school that we need to continue to look at safety in all of our schools. And I hope as a community, our police department, our public safety people can continue to work with all the schools in making these drop-off and pickup zones safer. But thanks for your comments tonight.
And I do have to give a shout-out to the Safety Patrol, 87, 88, proud member.
Alright.
And so, any other questions from the Council before we open for the public?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Cyrus.
Mayor, I'd just like to say that I walked down Washington Street on Sunday afternoon and talked with all the people that were out and I knocked on a bunch of doors. And I found that the majority of the people were against turning it into a two-way. Many were indifferent. I had no one that specifically said, "I want this to be a two-way." I'm sure there could have been some. I went all the way from 6th Street all the way up to 18th Street, talking with everyone that answered the door and that I ran into. But to me, it doesn't seem like it makes any sense to make it a two-way. We even closed down Franklin Street for Lincoln School. And if you make it two-way, you're gonna double the traffic. And also, I'm concerned about the number of crossings that are between the Catholic school and the Catholic Church. I had one parent who had did his totals. He said there's 7,320 crossings. That's each time a child goes over and then comes back, that would count as two. Now, 7,300 is a tremendous amount to cross that street and it's kind of a kitty-corner crossing. And my biggest concern is, I want the children to be safe. I don't care if we close those blocks down or whatever we have to do. But to just make it because other cities have it that way. I believe Cedar Falls is a unique and great place to live. And that's worked for however many years the school's been there. I know I'm 60 years old and it was there when I was born. And the thing about it is, we'll lose parking on Sunday for the Catholic Church. We'll also lose that for the Methodist Church. And it's, this time that was on this should have been spent on maybe Aldrich School. I only have one more thing to add because I'm gonna try and make this short. I had 45 emails and they were all in favor of keeping it a one-way, all of them. So, I think that kinda puts it in perspective and I hope to keep that street a one-way. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions from Council before I open it to the public?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Miller, go ahead.
For staff, the conversion from one-way to two-way, we've done that with State Street. We've done it with Washington. That goes back several years. Typically, I mean, largely because of some of the reasons that David put out there, I believe, in that functionality is the biggest reason, and I think safety as well, from going from a one-way to a two-way. Is there, are there any other reasons? I heard from several people who didn't feel like staff had given them compelling reasons as to why this conversion should take place. Have we listed all those or there's some other things? I do have another question once that one's answered.
I can probably address that for you, Mr. Miller. But correct, when State Street and then Washington from 1st Street to 6th Street was converted, you know, 50 years ago, the predominant way was one-way traffic due to volumes. You can carry a lot of volume on a one-way street with two lanes going in the same direction. That's why they're coupled with another street, State Street and Washington. So, when those go away, the traffic circulation kinda... So when those go away, the traffic circulation kind of gets out of balance. So state that the volume will double with a two-way street is not an accurate statement.
And then in terms of safety, what are you seeing for data regarding stoplights versus stop signs? We've done enough things on different roads, but...
Well, I think, I don't have the presentation here, but David can share a photo as part of the presentation that we put on there. There is a one point in time where a traffic signal or pedestrian signal that is currently out there today presents a hazard. And that would be when the pedestrian pushes a button and there's a large group that crosses, which Ms. Hackett can attest to it, that between 20 and 30 students cross. Well, by the time, you know, half of the group gets crossed, that light has already changed. And in this specific snapshot in time, David has the photo that when the group started to cross, it was red. Halfway across, half of the students are still out in the middle of the street and the light is green. You know, there's still a point in time where that light presents challenges where the motorists can either try to hurry through the yellow light or proceed with the green light. And our goal is with working with the school and the church parish was to eliminate all of that and try to have the safest crossing for all of those students. And we felt this was the best scenario.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Cruz, go ahead.
Yes. I'm wondering, the drop-off lane, is there any reason that couldn't be built and keep it as a one-way? As well as the bus drop-off on Seventh? Incorporate those things in there? And then keep the parking that we talk about losing? Because like Mr. Sire said, I had dozens of people for quite a number of months now against the conversion. So I don't find any stakeholders wanting to do this. They do want a safe drop-off and they do want a relocation of the bus. So I think we can accommodate everybody by incorporating those features and keep it as a one-way. So I guess if somebody could answer to that?
Well, I'll just state, so the one-way traffic is traveling south. So it'd be pretty hard to kind of put a slip lane, drop-off lane without students and children still having to cross the street to get over to the school. The benefit that we're showing on our concept right now is that lane with the conversion drops the children off right at the sidewalk, right at the curb. So, I mean, it's a built-in safety feature where, you know, they wouldn't have to cross the street when they get out of the cars, just hop out onto the sidewalk and get into school. I think what kind of typically happens now is that parents will, a lot of times, I think they kind of double park to allow their children, their kids, to get out of the cars. And then they're still dodging vehicles and running across the street to get up to the school. So that would be the, that would be my concern, try to put in some kind of drop-off lane if it was to stay, you know, a one-way.
I guess I'm thinking of the drop-off area behind Cedar Heights Elementary in Hawthorne. That accommodates everybody quite nicely. And if you're constructing a drop-off area out of the flow of traffic and if they double park and there's still a one-way to get around them, I think it would work well. So you're gaining the drop-off out of the flow of traffic. And like Mr. Sire said, it's been this way for 50, 60, 70 years, whatever it's been. And going back to what he said, there's no stakeholders that have said they want this to be a two-way. If you want to slow the speed down, you change the speed signs, limit signs. So that's where I'm at with it.
Thank you. Mayor? Yes, Councilor Typer.
I guess I'd just like to say, you know, for the last 15 years or so, I've been a stakeholder. I've lived on Clay and on 13th Street. And, you know, this corridor definitely does travel fast. You don't have to be a rocket scientist to understand that once you get over the hill on 13th Street, it is fast and dangerous. And so, you know, I want to really focus on the whole corridor too. And I'd agree with our traffic engineers that two-way streets, you know, have benefits. One-way streets had a benefit when you needed to move volumes of traffic. But just because this is the way we've always done it, isn't a reason to do it that way in the future. I mean, look at Waterloo. If you want to be discombobulated, try to move through that city. So I like everything that staff has done with the stakeholders, the school and the church. We've added parking, a drop-off lane, we have lighted stop signs. The lane width reduction alone reduces travel length by 33%. So, you know, I commend staff. I know this is a really difficult position to be in, but there's good and sound reasoning for doing this two-way conversion. It may not sound like the most popular thing at the time, but for the long-term development of the city, look at the vitality that's been brought to our corridors that have been converted, both on Washington and on State. So I appreciate the thoughtfulness, I appreciate the effort, and I look forward to a better street design here.
Thank you. And at this point, since we have some time, I would like to open it up for public comment. If there's anybody in the audience, public speakers who would like to talk, you can press star nine on your phone or else press the raise hand icon. So I see Mr. Butler, go ahead, sir. Name an address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I live at 1022 Washington Street, the corner of 11th and Washington. And I'm one of those stakeholders that truly believes we need to change to two-way. Saturday, as my wife described it, I was playing in the front yard, trimming a tree and doing some other work. 7:30, the first person turned the wrong way on Washington and headed north. I waved them down and they thought I was an idiot until they realized the sign said, "You're going the wrong way." Three sets of cars that morning looked like they were, two looked like they were in a race to get down Washington. That's where most of my neighbors complain, it's the speed. They really don't give a hang about two-way or one-way, but they want to slow down the traffic. And I believe one-way makes the traffic go faster. I think we need to slow down our traffic, particularly as you get away from Eighth Street. One nice person waved at me as she turned left off from a right-hand lane. Fortunately, I was waving at the car behind her in the left lane because I realized what she was doing, she would have crossed his lane of traffic and run into. This is on a Saturday morning when traffic really isn't very busy. So that is a real concern to me. We also have issues with water. I go to the Methodist Church and I go down in the spring and chop ice at Seventh and Eighth, trying to break up the ice on our side of the street, on the Methodist side, which also affects the kids trying to come across Seventh Street to get over to the church for Jim or come back. They have to work around those ice ponds. And that was my whole reason for getting involved in this is we would like to get that fixed. And staff had said, "We can't fix it all today, but that would be part of the bigger issue." Our loss of parking is more important to the Catholic Church than to the Methodist Church because we moved our door to Clay Street. But the loss of parking is only going to take place from 1:00 PM on Saturday to 3:00 PM on Sunday. That's the only piece we're talking about here, is the east side of Washington Street has council edicted, edict, whatever, that you can park on the east side of the street from 1:00 PM Saturday, which takes care of most funerals and weddings, to afternoon, basically after church on Sunday. And when we were on, primarily on Washington Street with our entrance, it was a challenge between the two churches of getting there quicker and trying to take care of it. And I have, more than once, come up, because I used to work, now I just play in my yard, but I would come south on Washington Street, cross Sixth Street, and immediately know that I had goofed up because the car or the teacher or whoever crossing the kids, the car approaching, driving east, would turn the light. It would be red for them. They would wait until I got there. Then the light would magically turn green for them and I would have a red light. If not that, then I would be sitting there and watch as trailer kids came running out. My light would turn green and these little kids would go charging across the street, trying to catch up with the rest of their class. I really feel, and I don't like that street sign anyway, but we need to do away with that. And I think we'd be way ahead slowing the traffic down as it gets down to my area, particularly as it gets close to 12th Street with the two-way street instead of people trying to get by each other on a race on a one-way.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Butler. I also see Janet Willet. And I will give you the mic, Janet. So go ahead, name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Janet Willet. I live at 716 Winter Drive in Cedar Falls. In January, I spoke for the Lego League team who made a simple request. They asked to look beyond Washington. They asked to look holistically at the traffic, vehicle, bus, and foot around St. Patrick's School. Specifically, they asked to look at Seventh Street that they felt was a zoo to them every day before and after school. They had an idea to move the bus drop-off to Seventh Street and parent drop-off to Washington. And they proposed this to the city engineers. And wow, imagine how these students feel seeing this proposal. While I know there still may be concerns on the two-way and the stop signs versus the stoplights, thank you. Thank you for listening, respecting, hearing, and acting on the voices of these students. You taught them a valuable lesson that they will carry with them into their adult lives. These children will grow up not afraid to speak up to authority when they have an idea. Thank you.
Terrific. And thank you, Ms. Willet, for bringing students into civics. It's really important that we do that. Okay, I see no other hands from the public side. So I will bring it back to council for any final questions or comments.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Derrick, go ahead.
I'd like, Chase, could you talk a little bit? A couple of the email, I got some of those same emails of people that were opposed. And a couple of them use the example of if in a couple of years we make Main Street a three-lane instead of a four-lane, they're fearful that that will just increase traffic on Washington and State Street. What are your thoughts on that?
Oh, I guess without having a lot of those volumes from Main Street in front of me, I can't speak to it. But generally, a three-lane can carry just as much as a four-lane street. That's based on, obviously, the volumes. And, you know, when you speak with the traffic engineers, they will say that in certain circumstances, three lanes can potentially carry more volume just due to the access for that center lane. But in this certain circumstance, I couldn't speak to that.
Okay, any other final questions?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Cruz, go ahead.
Do you have an accurate count of how many parking spots we're losing by doing this configuration?
Just off the top of my head, I know that up front, we are talking around 30 along that east side. And we've been in numerous conversations with Ms. Hackett and Father Coulter with the church. And they are very well aware of that number. And we did our best with the proposed design to regain a lot of those stalls.
Well, we're gaining 18, we're still losing 12. I didn't hear anybody speak to the idea of having the bus drop-off on Seventh, like Ms. Willet had said. Again, I'm not convinced that we can accommodate what many people want for safety as far as the bus drop-off and slip lane and keep it as a one-way, which aside from Mr. Butler, he's the first person I've heard speak for the two-way.
Keep in mind, we went through numerous renditions. We've shown angled parking on Washington. We've showed concepts that regained potentially more stalls than they currently have today. So we then proposed that back parking lot, what I would call a play area to Ms. Hackett and striping that. And I believe there was around 20 stalls in that area. But, you know, after a lot of communication with these two stakeholders, this is the concept that everybody was comfortable with.
Okay, anything else from council? Same here? Yes, Councilor Miller, is that you?
Yeah. Just to clarify, the church is on board with this, correct? I thought I saw a memo regarding that.
Yeah, Ms. Hackett could speak to that.
Yes, Father Coulter has been involved with this. And Father Coulter and I, as well as people representing the school and representing the parish, have approved this plan.
Thank you.
All right. And if nothing else, then for Mr. Wiki, what was the ask tonight from staff?
Yeah, so the recommended motion would be for council to approve the concept as presented tonight and allow our division to move forward with final design.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I would so move.
Seconded? It's been motioned and seconded. Any final discussion? Then all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so just to be on the safe side, let me see a show of hands for aye. One, two, three. So I've got three ayes. And then for the nays? One, two, three for the nays. So being as Councilmember DeBier is not here, my understanding is that even split is a no, is that correct? So that means that that motion fails. And we'll bring it back to staff for further consideration. So thank you. The next item that we have for tonight is bills and payroll. Is there a motion to approve? The motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? If that passes, so that ends our meeting for tonight. And we're looking at seven, it should be a 7:00 start time. If we can get a quick call from Channel 15 at what time you'd like us to start. Sometimes they need a little extra recording time. How about we say 7:05, just to be on the safe side? So we'll pick up again at 7:05. And there's cable.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead. Okay, 7:05. We'll see you then.